Good evening. We changed the format a little bit tonight. We had an executive session planned for the end of the meeting, and since we had time before the meeting, we took care of that business before the start of the regular meeting. So the meeting has already been called to order. So please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shannon, please note that all council members are present with the exception of Councilor Davis, who is excused tonight. And we do have a proclamation tonight. It's National Service Dog Month. Whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and inclusivity of all citizens, whereas in the United States, 64 million adults and children have a disability and only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and the need is growing. Whereas Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships. Whereas Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence by providing best in-class training, ongoing follow-up services, and a deeply committed community of support. Whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them. Whereas the city of Pulse Falls continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their service dogs are embraced. Now therefore, in recognition of service dogs and the adults and childrens with disabilities in our community, I, Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the city of Pulse Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim September to be National Service Dog Month. I encourage all citizens to celebrate tasked-trained service dogs and be respectful of the rights afforded to the adults, children, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of their assistance.
Mayor, they would like to get their picture taken with you?
Want to wait? It should be fairly short. Is that all right? Perfect. I don't know why you want my picture. All the people to choose from. Happy to do it. Happy to do it. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Declarations of conflict. Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the September 2, 2025 city council meeting. Item B is accountable for August 21 through September 5, 2025. And item C is the July cash-in investments report.
Questions on the consent?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Westlin?
Aye.
Sigler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Stiglitter?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is public hearings, and tonight we have none, followed by unfinished businesses, returning ordinances. And the first item is the water reclamation facility solids handling improvements sole source procurement. You've got the longest titles.
I try to keep them short.
No, you don't.
Then I'm worried it'll be confusing if there's not enough information. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, Andrew Arbeany, Projects Division Manager for Public Works. I was here in July and presented a design contract with JUB engineers that kicked off the solids handling improvement project. At that time, I had mentioned a few things that we would be bringing back to council. One of those items was a procurement of a second dewatering unit. So this presentation is that request. I put together a few slides tonight, including a background of the project, recapping a bit from my last presentation, and then also expanding on the sole source process and how we made that determination. Please feel free to ask any questions as I move through the presentation. I will also answer any questions at the end. So as I mentioned, the design contract was awarded at the July 1 council meeting. This improvement project was identified in the facility master plans. Most recent is the 2024 facility study, which refined the solids treatment improvements and was a baseline for starting this project. Recapping a bit on what solids treatment is and how this relates to the dewatering process itself, specifically this dewatering unit. So as the wastewater moves through the treatment processes at the water reclamation facility, the microbes in the wastewater are used to treat that. As it nears the end of the process, it approaches the thickening and dewatering. So those are the two steps that we use to eliminate the water from the solids material. I know it sounds oppressive. So this project also split the larger project into two phases, a project one and two, or phase one and phase two. Phase one, our priority is to increase the redundancy of the dewatering process. Right now, we have a primary unit and a backup unit, which is older and does not produce at the rate as the primary unit. Procuring this equipment now and getting it installed as soon as possible mitigates that redundancy risk. This project also includes a CMGC component. So we are currently in the process of drafting an RFQ or RFP to solicit a CMGC that would assist in the design and construction of the project, and then eventually the dewatering unit will be assigned to that CMGC for installation. So a few of the criteria we used in determining the sole source are listed on the screen. I'll just kind of walk through that. The existing dewatering unit is a BDP unit. This has allowed the crew to be familiar with that unit, as well as maintain an existing inventory of parts for breakdowns and just routine maintenance. In working with the project team, we did reach out to BDP to start those conversations that we had an interest in adding a second dewatering unit. We were able to confirm that the preliminary schedule they provided for fabrication and delivery aligns with the overall project schedule. Also, the existing dewatering facility, when it was constructed, I think around 2010, and that original BDP unit was installed, it was designed for a second BDP brand of unit. In fact, the concrete footings were also placed in the slab at that time. As a side, just to provide some context and background to our process, before we reached the sole source determination, staff and the project team evaluated other options in procuring a dewatering unit, which included a open bid or bidding that similar technology. We had reached out to another vendor, a vendor that we use, have used before, and their preliminary schedule was that the lead time for delivery was significantly longer, and the preliminary cost estimate was greater than BDP. The sole source procurement is outlined in the city's purchasing policy, with confirmation with legal and finance. So the staff discussed this with them as we were working through this process. This is also contemplated in Idaho code, so I've put the section that's applicable. In this instance, there's a handful of considerations for sole source. In this instance, honing in on the compatibility of equipment, replacement of parts or service, which is essentially the paramount consideration. Also, in the council packets included the memo from JUB that was their summary and analysis of second dewatering unit, and ultimately a recommendation for a sole source procurement. These pictures turned out really well. I had a previous picture that was rather dark, but good lighting at this time. The first picture on the left is looking south in the dewatering building. That is the existing BDP unit. The second picture on the right shows the open space where a second unit would be installed. And then you can see the concrete, smaller concrete squares, which are the footings or the foundation for that unit. So next steps, city is, we should say, staff is requesting that city council declare BDP as a sole source vendor. This would authorize staff to publish a public notice in the paper, and then we would begin contract negotiations concurrent with that. We would also return at a future council meeting, ideally with a procurement contract that we negotiate with BDP and recommend, make a recommendation at that point.
I'm sorry. So that contract would lock us in to doing these transactions with BDP for whatever amount of time we specify in the contract, or just for this one purchase?
The contract with BDP will just be for the purchase of the dewatering unit itself, that piece of equipment. In that contract, we would have the contract times, the schedule and delivery. It's estimated that the delivery time will be 12 months from notice of fabrication. So the terms of that contract would outline the cost and timeframe to manufacture and deliver it separately. We will have a separate contract with a contractor to install that unit once it arrives.
Sure. So the idea then of having a sole source vendor is just that we don't have to go out to bid for this, since it's above that threshold of how much things cost that we have to go out to bid for?
Okay. I think I, sorry, I misunderstood originally. So in this particular instance, just for the procurement of the second unit, we're asking for a sole source procurement, not a, this would not be for, into perpetuity for additional units. It would just be this one time for this particular unit. And then the sole source decision to do that is based on the criteria that I had listed in the previous slide.
Right. And I, sorry, when I looked through this, I definitely misunderstood. I thought like sole source was like a company of some kind, but now I understand what you're asking, but I guess I'm just sort of wondering why you even need to ask the question. It sounds like BDP is cheapest, fastest, most appropriate for what we have. So why do we need a sole source vendor, like why do we need to identify someone as our sole source?
Right. So under Idaho code, there's a threshold for procuring, for both Public Works. I might quickly get out of my ski, so I'm looking both at Warren and.
Right. There's a certain threshold that we have to go out to bid for, right?
That's precisely right. So basically, Idaho code, that 672808 outlines those places that you can look at if there really is just one vendor for this. And it goes through, that JUB memo goes through the sort of applicable, not applicable, but it's sort of those, you know, when it's a product or merchandise, trademark goods, solicitation isn't practical or disadvantageous, or so on and so forth.
Okay.
So you're considering those reasons, which are sort of included but not limited to those reasons. So it really is just that there really is no other vendor out there for this particular widget.
And we know that from previous times that we've gone out to bid, which is why we can confidently say for this project, we don't need to go out to bid, and we can deem this person a sole source, correct?
Right.
Okay. Sorry if I'm the only one that wasn't keeping up for the last 10 minutes, but I think I put all the pieces together.
Because if I could just add one clarification, there is, so there are similar, there are other vendors that make a similar product. However, for the specific reasons in considering sole source, which is up to the governing entity, the city of Pulse Falls, making this decision of a sole source in this instance, based on essentially what we're presenting is this criteria for these reasons.
Gotcha.
John didn't see.
Yeah. Which is usually a bad thing, but in this case is a good thing. Right. Okay.
The code goes on to talk about instances of emergency as well, so that's why there's a few.
Sorry, I jumped in.
No, I appreciate the question. Absolutely do. So estimated cost of the equipment just for the unit itself is estimated at 1.2 million. That does not include the installation and the ancillary pieces that will come later as part of the larger project. And then this is funded under the solids handling improvements project. Last slide, just a brief recap on project schedule. So following a declaration this evening for a sole source, staff will move forward with the procurement documents for the dewatering equipment. And then concurrently, I mentioned at the beginning, we are working on a draft RFQ, RFP for the solicitation and selection of a CMGC. So I anticipate that we will bring a CMGC into the project in the coming months, and that would also come to council, ideally with a form of a contract recommendation to hire a CMGC probably later this year. Overall project schedule, so this project one timeframe, we're looking at moving forward with a dewatering unit with a lead time of nine to 12 months. Hopefully, we'll see some improvement in that schedule as we work through the negotiations. And then the overall timeframe of the project for one and two would go into August of 2028. With that, I will answer any additional questions.
Just questions?
Yeah. So is the sole source, is the purpose of that just to avoid the red tape of doing an RFP where we already know the outcome? Or is it to avoid a situation where somebody else happened to come in lower, and now we're stuck with that, and we have two different vendors?
So in looking at what we have existing and providing that streamline, a unit that our staff is familiar with, we've, originally when the facility was constructed, we anticipated that it would be a same unit. We've done, we've taken a similar approach with some of our other infrastructure, looking at wastewater on our collection system. We standardize around a certain pump, and that allows any of the 30 lift stations around the site, an operator can go work on that unit, on that piece of equipment. So that was a fundamental consideration in looking at the same type and same brand of equipment, streamlining parts, so that we have one set of parts instead of two sets of parts for two pieces of equipment. In reaching out to another vendor, our take on that was that they were not as quick on the schedule. Their schedule was actually, the delivery was much later. And in terms of addressing the increasing gap of redundancy between our primary unit and the existing backup unit, the shorter schedule provides more of a risk mitigation in that approach. So that was another consideration in pursuing this sole source path.
Yeah, I know why we want to have the same vendor. I'm just curious about, like, what's the worst-case scenario that we're trying to avoid by using this mechanism? And it sounds like it's being stuck with a different brand. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think the primary consideration was under that compatibility of equipment, components, replacement, service, and that's.
But yeah, if we, if somebody comes in and says, we'll do it for a hundred bucks, like, then we're stuck with that.
Then you have to take the lowest bid.
We have to take the lowest bid. Right.
Right. Okay. And we're, you're obviously comfortable with the vendor and long-term support and parts availability and everything. It's not like, oh, there's a new model that came out five years later, and now we can't support what we have, right?
I do think there are some additional features we might be considering in this new unit that have advanced and evolved in the 15 years that we've had the previous unit, which I think is advantageous to us, and that's a consideration that we'll be looking at. But yes, we are comfortable with the BDP unit that we had. And aside from the normal wear and tear and things that we deal with, that is something that our entire crew is familiar with.
The other nuance here is the process, the motions, a little, your council's making the declaration that there is only one vendor for this widget. And so council makes that declaration, then that triggers us actually publishing it in the paper 14 days before we actually enter into the award of the contract. So we're still giving that notice to the world out there that, hey, we've declared this as one vendor, but there's still a timeframe for others to pipe up and say, wait a second, this isn't, this isn't actually, you know, there are multiple vendors for this. And so that's why it has that 14-day publishing requirement in the code as well.
And in 10 years, we could decide to go with a different vendor if we want, even if we make this declaration today.
Oh, absolutely. It's still, it's really tied to the vendor and the project on each individual contract. It's saying, we're doing this for this contract that we're negotiating.
Okay.
Well, to add to that, this addresses the redundancy and an issue that we are facing today. As part of the larger design of the project, we also will need to add additional solids handling, which could be a different type of technology, but there will likely be another sort of solids handling, dewatering unit as part of the larger project to account for that long-term capacity.
Just a question, sir.
Just quickly, is it realistic then to assume that even if another vendor came in with a different manufactured product, considering the changes that we would have to make to the existing facility footprint to handle that machine, plus stocking parts and retraining some of our crew to manage it, I would think that that would probably drive it out of the ballpark of the lowest bid anyway. Is that a safe assumption?
Okay. Struggling to, I think, track your whole question. So if.
So if we were not to use the sole, what is it called?
Sole source.
Sole source, this particular brand that we already have parts for, right? And we also design the footprint of the facility itself to handle, any other machine would incur additional costs to make the changes to the facility and to add a parts inventory to support it, plus the training of the personnel on a new machine, correct?
Sure. That is all part of, that would all be factored in. You're absolutely correct.
So I could assume that that bid would probably be, would be over what we would face in the BDP machine?
It could. There, as an example, the footings are spaced for a BDP unit. Not to say another unit could not be placed there, but it would have to include some adaption, adapting the current structure to accommodate that unit. So that all gets factored into cost and a bid.
Right. So my point is that with this mechanism, we're probably ending at the same result as if we were to go to bid, including other manufacturers.
Right.
Any other questions? entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the water reclamation facility solids handling improvements sole source procurement.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Sigler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Stiglitter?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Andrew. Next up today is, tonight is fiscal year 2026 fee resolution.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2026 fee resolution.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Stiglitter?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Sigler?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is the update to rules of procedure and meeting, for meetings and public hearings.
I move to approve the update to rules of procedure for meetings and public hearings.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Plou?
Aye.
Stiglitter?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Sigler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Now we're in a new business. We have one item, Ross Point Road Cycle Track, award of contract. Mr. Paulus.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Robert Paulus, city engineer. Tonight, staff is requesting that you consider and award the contract for construction of the Ross Point Cycle Track, and also issue the notice of award to Cameron Riley LLC. Back in March of this year, we approached you and we entered into a contract with JUB engineers to design a cycle track from Third Avenue to Second Avenue on Ross Point Road. A quick reminder, a cycle track is basically a separated bicycle lane, at least separated by either delineators or a curb between the vehicle lanes and where the bicycles are at. We would be utilizing a curb very similar to what's out in front of Walmart right now, modified slightly to tie into the same design that is being utilized on the section of cycle track that's being built with the I-90 Highway 41 interchange from Celts East Way down to Third Avenue. The reason that we're building the portion again between Third and Second is because ITD's contract with the interchange did not allow them to go further south than Third Avenue. This is showing the limits of what's being done. The part to the left on the screen between Third and Second is what we would be constructing. We did go out, because of the size, we solicited bids from three contractors. The three contractors we initially talked with were, two of them found that the project was too small for the size of the firm they were, and the third one thought that the project was too big.
Right.
Sounds like the Three Little Pigs story. We then went out and we talked with the subcontractor for the Highway 41 I-90 interchanges, doing the concrete work, Cameron Riley directly, and they provided us a quote of about $122,329. That was less than the engineer's estimate of $123,008. So we would like to award that contract to Cameron Riley and include a 10% contingency amount of $12,236 to that. So the total request would be for $134,595 more along the lines of not to exceed that amount. I see this project as a fairly low risk for the use of contingency. One area that we are going to play it a little bit with on Cameron Riley is issuance of a start date. I would like to have that and coordinate that with the I-90 41 interchange. This section would work a lot better if we construct it at the same time that ITD constructs their section between Celts East Way and Third. I stand for any questions that you might have.
Rob, where would the funds come from?
The funding would come from our multimodal impact fees. This is a multimodal impact fee project MM76, or a portion of it. That fund is also paying for the portion that ITD is constructing.
When you presented this before, was there a grant involved with this? Am I just making that up?
There was not a grant involved on this one. I think you might be crossing that with the Prairie Trail project, which we're working with Pulse Falls Highway District on.
Okay. And then my other question is about snow removal. How will this affect Ross Point being, what is the word?
Normal snow removal by the plows on the roadway for vehicular traffic should not be impaired.
Okay.
What would be required is for the Parks Department to come in with their gator or a small pickup truck. The width of the cycle track itself is wide enough that you can get a piece of equipment on there with a snow plow blade and push it and clear it.
But Ross Point should still be able to be plowed to stay the full width of their lanes?
That is correct. One advantage to what we're doing is you can see the curve of Ross Point Road. By pushing the vehicular traffic more to the east side, it actually opens up the visibility as traffic's heading from left to right, or which is from south to north towards Third Avenue. It improves the visibility at the Third Avenue and Ross Point Road intersection, which should be good for safety as we anticipate more people will be making left turns at that location.
And just to remind me, this is part of the Centennial Trail, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Questions?
I move to approve the Ross Point Road Cycle Track and award of contract.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Stiglitter?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Sigler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks. Thanks, Rob. Next item up tonight is citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council on a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none. Administrative staff reports.
We have none tonight, sir.
Mayor council comments. Don't have any comments tonight. Captain, I had talked at a previous meeting about some residents down West Ridge Elementary and some of the some of the streets down there being, speed limits not being observed. And I think Captain Brannan was going to take a look at that, and I just hadn't seen Mark. Would you check and see if that's been looked at? Appreciate it. How about council comments? And we have already taken care of our executive session, so the next motion is?
Adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Aye.